Welcome, everybody.
For all of you that don't know it yet, our president has been with it.
I heard.
Okay, just wanted to let you know.
Back in business. I think, uh, I think, uh, you need a motion to, I want it.
So moved.
All in favor?
Can I second it though?
If you may.
Okay, can I second?
Oh.
We're still all.
It was all on me, but it's okay. Close the minutes, not sign the law.
Would we like a motion to sign the law?
No, I mean, I mean a motion to sign the law.
Oh, I'd like to see some minutes.
No, I didn't, I said law.
You are welcome.
I'm following the back.
Go look back, David, go.
But you can put the motion to sign the minute if you want. You always have to say that anyway.
I don't know.
Motion to sign the minutes of January twenty-second.
No, I said we.
I will say that.
All those in favor? Please note for parallel time.
I'm looking at something that I believe is here, this is all we have on my agenda, it's really. I don't have anything with my, I don't have anything. Here we go. I know.
Okay over there?
I don't know, it's all good. What is on right here? You were asking, you were here, we were, everybody was here. So, in old business, it's just a safe harbor update, and the only thing that I'm gonna say about that is, uh, we do have a confirmed date for the Maraud team coming from Washington on April twenty-fourth, twenty-third and twenty-fourth, which we're very excited about because that's something that has to be done before we get the contract signed. So, uh, we're working on the Neekah tourment and the site visit, and everything's moving along smoothly, so we're all happy about that. Next. Renee has an update on the wastewater treatment plant upgrade.
Uh, there's a letter here packet from, um, I believe it was CBG.
Yeah, the CBG.
Yep, um, Oliver Associates has submitted a letter of intent to apply for a million dollar grant, um, towards the wastewater to the plant upgrade. And the match money that the letter references can be, can come from the four hundred thousand dollars E.P. grant that we were awarded, so.
That's good.
Just more steps in that progress moving forward.
So, the next thing on the agenda is a letter of appreciation to the American Legion Auxiliary, which is long overdue, I think. So, on behalf of the town of Lubec, we express our gratitude for the hard work and dedication of the American Legion Auxiliary. Whenever hard times fall on the citizens of Lubec, the American Legion Auxiliary is always there providing aid and assistance. The fundraisers hosted by the Auxiliary create an opportunity for the people of Lubec to give back and help in a person's time of need. We would also like to recognize the Auxiliary's outstanding community support with college-bound student scholarships and events at the main Veterans Home. They also provide activities for children throughout the year. The Lubec Select Board extends its deepest gratitude to the American Legion Auxiliary for its continued support of the Lubec community. I would like a motion that we sign this.
So moved.
I'll second.
Second, you all in favor?
I'd like to add, ladies, you guys are fantastic, doing a great job.
Yes, we will, soon as we get it officially signed, you can come up, Denise can send your picture. I know a few years ago, there was just a bunch of, uh, older people, me being included as part of the Auxiliary back in, what, around seven or eight years ago? And then I got involved with a lea, you know, the chamber and then selectmen, and I couldn't work on that. And these young ladies took it over and got junior Auxiliary members, and it's just like outstanding. They've gone to the conventions and they've really put us on the map, so, uh, we're very appreciative. Penny and Crystal. You gotta come up.
You guys all wanna stand?
Yeah. So you're the president, are you the president? So we will get this, get those two too, any, uh, all of you guys are all with the. Why don't you, you wanna stand?
Doesn't matter.
Do you wanna, do you wanna show them that? And you guys turn around, I'll hand, understand it.
More, no.
They, they, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll pick through that.
Come on, you shorty.
It covers up my fat.
I'm in behind you.
Very good. Thank you so much. Take the, this and put it in the, put it in the middle. Wait, 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 ladies. We're doing another one just with you guys in that thing.
A lot, Joey. Joey's a, open day team.
My, oh, that's good. Hi, thank you. Thank you so much.
I stayed, but I've seen you before.
Why don't we just, um, go through some of the, um, before we do the sewer abatement, why don't we just go through the, these are just announcements, now. So we're gonna update, um, this is an announcement, we're gonna shift to the, we're gonna leave the third item for a minute, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we're gonna have a discussion on it. Update, updated RLF loan documents, it's been taking, brought to my attention, and it's been over ten years.
Yes, so.
And so it's being updated, but that's all we're gonna be saying.
It's being updated, the, I mean, it's, it's not much of a change, it just needed to get updated a little bit. Um, we're going over some final copies of the user notes, which will then be.
Submitted.
Submitted and looked at on March, did you, did you, next meeting, which is March second, at three o'clock.
And.
Kind of throwing in a little.
Yeah, I think that's.
Committee update in there, yeah.
So, the main municipal elected officials class is June eleventh, and Machias, it's one of the few times that you can get that class closed. Have you been to it already, Sonia?
No, where does it begin?
So, it's, um, June eleventh. When you're an elected official, you have to go to this three-hour class.
So, I mean, you went to it recently.
I went to Augusta.
Right.
Yeah, well, they, it's, um.
Did the same thing?
Yeah, so this one's telephonic, right?
Right, and it's not gonna get any closer than Machias, so.
So, there you go.
I did it in Augusta.
So, broadband?
Broadband.
Broadband?
Okay, um, we had a meeting, um, Denise and I have a meeting with Mary Alice Look from Whiting to bring her up to date on what was, uh, what's been happening, and she actively would like to get included with us and the unorganized territories. And we are scheduled for another meeting this Friday, so let me give you both those things, so when you come to meeting that day, you'll know.
After the thaw.
After the thaw, well, I saved Friday.
Yeah, no, you're not gonna have it.
Yeah.
One hundred percent freezing rain.
Could we have it at my house?
You could have it.
No.
You can get on your computer and watch, and do the webinar yourself.
On the computer, we could do it individually. It's a webinar, so.
You can do it at your house.
Yeah, so we can do that, yeah, okay. But we are, I, it's very positive. Don and Tim are writing of this huge grant that's out from Connect Me, and so we will be included in that with Edmund's Trasket, Whiting and us, yeah. So we'll hear.
Fairly so. All right, so we can go to the sewer abatement request. We had a written request to review a piece of property on Water Street from a sewer, a user, and there's, there's two properties together, they're right by SOS, and the request was they would like an abatement on one. Neither one, I believe, is hooked up to the sewer right now. So, we did some research on it and went back and found that, how, how it came to be that they, they are, you know, people that do not have a hookup to the sewer, how, how did that come to be? And then the ordinance on section ten-one, the source of all the revenues for retiring debt, services and capital expenditures shall be assigned to the taxpayers of Lubec until September, the main municipal bond is paid in full, which has, which is true now. And the entire cost of operating and maintenance of the public sewer works shall be a sewer service charge signed to the users and benefited users of the sewer system. In the case of a connected building that's not having water, accounts will land only, and accounts with a working private septic system and having no discharge during a given billing period will be assigned a minimum sewer charge. So, back in, um, let me see if I can find my paper. We voted, the sewer minimum charge used to be fifty-six-ten, but back in, what date was this? Okay, March sixth of two thousand nineteen, it came to our attention that we actually were not abiding by the ordinance because the cost of managing a sewer building was actually more than what we were bringing in as revenue. So, I mean, unhappily, I think we all raised the rate, because many of us on the board as well have, you know, have sewer bills, but it was in the best interest of the town that we tried to balance the, uh, the books. So that it went to seventy-six-ten, which is the minimum usage of, of a sewer, so.
I think that was, um, I think Peter Boyce brought that, that to our attention, and we are probably one of the.
Lowest.
The only community, the lowest community, the lowest, uh, so, it was time.
So, Callis's minimum fee is one-twenty-four, Esports is eighty-four-sixty, Machias is ninety-five-fifty. And they have different rates with, if they're not connected, but when the sewer was put in, it was, if you are biolateral and you can be cooked up, that's what it's been going right.
Now, this, this lot, is this where the old brown building used to be, and Coggins store, is that the two lots?
Yes.
So there's that old brown building and the old Coggins store.
Uh-huh, it's just a, it's just a foundation.
But nothing was ever in the brown building ever. Okay, I just wanted to know what you were talking, that's all.
So, so. Yeah, um, if you'd like to speak, you're welcome.
Thank you, um, it is my property, and I'm not really asking for an abatement. What I'm asking the Select Board to do is to change the minimum fee for land-only properties that fall within the town sewer area. Now, I realize that according to the ordinance, it says that a benefit user is anyone who's in a certain distance from that. But I'm not hooked up, I do have a home where I do pay sewer fees, I was not unhappy with the raising of the rates, I realized that you need to cover costs. Not having sewer hooked up, or just the opportunity to have the sewer hooked up, should not be a fee that is equal to someone who uses nine hundred cubic feet of water. So, the Select Board does have, per section ten-four of the ordinance, the ability to change the rates. So I'm asking that it be changed, not for myself only, but for anyone that's affected, having land-only properties. Whether that be to zero dollars or to a lesser fee, I did some research, as I'm, I'm sure you probably did as well, no, no area town our size, Esport, Callis, Machias, East Machias, Millbridge, none of them charge a land-only person a fee, with the exception of Machias, they charge eighteen-fifty, however, I did speak directly to the town administrator there, they do not enforce it. No one pays that, people said, um, we don't use it, we're not paying any money, and so they said, okay. So, you know, based on what other towns are doing, I find it only fair for the citizens of Lubec that we kind of follow suit. And that's what I'm asking for, not an abatement for my own property.
I guess my, my concern would be, I'm not on it, first of all, so I'd be a lot of place talking about it, but if we reduce that, which I really don't have a problem with, then we're gonna raise anybody else's rates to cover. I mean, I have a friend of mine that has two lots, he's in the same boat, so I know exactly what you're up against. My only concern is, where are we with the sewer plant now financially? I mean.
Well, uh, we're, uh, running at a, a little bit less of a loss than we were, because we raised the rates, but if we were to take, if we were to even suggest, and I think, I think the decision would have to be with the town, that, um, you can't, um, agree to one person's request, like you said, without the others, and I believe we've counted over eighty properties, which would increase the, the user's fees, at least, probably double them. Which would probably go to like a hundred and fifty dollars, I'm just, I'm just, you know, doing math in my head, so.
I, I myself would like to table it till the next meeting, because I wanna do some homework on it.
I, I, yeah, I think there's, well.
Oh, it seems reasonable.
I think it needs to be put in on, I think it probably needs to be put on as an article, but I don't know whether we should put it on or whether there should be a petition, a people's petition to put it on. I think that's where I am with the decision, I don't think we should make the decision. First of all, it's not in the best interest of the town, in point of view of the Select Board, to do that, because it's causing more financial burden than we already have, five million dollar renovation in the works for the sewers. Four to five million dollars, right? And that we're working on grants for it, so to just, at this point, the user fees are supposed to be paying for, um, the yearly costs and the chemicals, the cost of the chemicals and the regulations have gone up, and we've kept the minimum fee at, at reasonable, almost too reasonable a rate.
Did you say that there were eighty people, eighty homeowners, who are in the same category as land?
I, I believe, I believe that we tried to count that.
Just, just the question.
The sewer just goes by your property, you're not hooked into the water, you're not hooked.
Well, no, I, that, yeah, you've got a lateral there.
And it was part of the agreement when it was put in.
Yes.
And I think maybe Sonia, you might have, you, you own the property.
I paid, I paid for years on a piece down in Brownville.
And you.
But you don't have a hook up.
No, there's nothing.
No, question.
I've always paid.
If you were to take the property and make it one property, would that?
We've had people do that.
If that only makes one bill?
That, that can work, yeah. Lubec landmarks has a, a lateral that we never, we'll never use, it just goes, and you pay.
Two bills.
We have to pay, I think, yeah.
I think we did have to pay two, you own four properties.
I think so, yeah.
Two are, are near the lateral.
Yeah, and so now we only have one hook up.
Yes.
I have a question, are properties with more than one housing unit charged the same rate as a property that has only one habitable structure?
I think it's by usage, there's a minimum fee, and then it goes by water usage, how many times?
I, I'm asking because in municipalities, you often pay more if you have two housing units. So, that, what, doesn't necessarily mean you have to raise the rates of single-family owners, but for lots that have two units, perhaps that would be the way to absorb the cost, because they're using the sewer. I, I think it's, uh, I really think it's unfair when people had just bought septic systems at the time it was installed, and they've never used it, and I have a friend in that situation. You know, I mean, it can drive them out of Lubec at this point, because they can't afford the cost.
I'll comment on that, um, the, if a, if a lot has two units, they get two bills.
Okay. So, I have two people planning, two units, do they get two bills?
And to what you're saying, Barbara, I mean, I was, I think this was ninety or ninety-one when this came in, and that was the heartburn of the whole thing, back then, I mean, I lived it, it was a fight. I mean, it was a fight for two years to have, ongoing, it was, it was.
I just wanted, if I may speak, um, just because it's always done that way, doesn't make it right. And just because we may have upcoming costs to the sewer system, doesn't mean we should, we should unfairly charge people who aren't using the system. Like I said, I, I am a sewer, I have a, I have a house, I pay a sewer bill. I have this new piece, this new small parcel that is not connected, I in no way use it. I would rather pay more for my usage than to pay for getting nothing. I do pay property tax on that lot, and part, forty percent of that goes to municipality, which covers part of the sewer system. So I am paying for, towards the sewer, I shouldn't pay then, again, for usage when I'm not using it. But that's what I'm asking, and, and that's, I, I think we should take a look at what other towns do. Fair is fair, it doesn't matter whether we need, you know, an upgrade to our sewer system or not, fair is fair. That's what I'd like you to consider, if you would please. And I think it would be helpful to know how many people are on the sewer system versus what you're saying, it's maybe eighty people that are land-only, maybe we have hundreds of numbers.
Four hundred thirty-five bills.
Four hundred thirty-five bills, yeah.
And eighty of them.
And eighty going.
As a, as a, uh, an option, one might be on the bills that they're separated, that if you pay for a hookup and you also pay for water usage, so you'd have both, not that you'd be paying as if you're using the water. I, I really think that's not fair, in fact, I think it's not fair in a class way. And it's not my interest to burden the town with that kind of litigation, but I don't.
Do you have a minimum water bill?
Oh, not for the properties, no.
No, okay.
Not for the lots, and that's what your sewer and the things.
Yeah, um, yeah, it's odd, isn't it, yeah.
But I believe that.
They charge you, the water company charges you.
In every other community, you do that, yeah.
They do here too, that's kinda weird.
We have the authority as the Select Board. You have to get charred. To authorize. Water bill? It to be put on the annual town meeting as the article. I think it's a big enough issue. And it should go. Because other people just. If you feel, you know, if you feel that it's worth investigating, I don't think we have, we should make the decision.
To get.
Well, that's still, that's still.
To get out of this.
Yeah, check that out.
To get out of this, you can combine two lots in the one.
I've already spent hours researching it, but maybe you guys could get a.
Well, the guy, the guy, we're placing.
Dan, you gotta be a deal with me.
I just talked to a, a budget planner, I'm actually working on it, and he owns two lots, and he pays sewer on both.
On that, and brought me by.
As far as I know, you only make it out.
You don't want it to, um, back down. I think one way we could approach this is to come up with something like that, Dan. They can go back from the town you bought. Sorry. I think one way we could approach this is the way that the land, the tree grow approaches it. They give you a big discount when you, when you, um, don't, when you do a management tree foresting, but then when you decide to make a profit on your property, then you have, you pay a hefty penalty to pull it out. So, there's, there would be a way that we, the town could recoup, let's say in ten years, your property triples in value, but the person buying says, well, we never paid any of that sewer stuff, and now we wanna be connected to the sewer, and maybe you're gonna pay three thousand dollars, or whatever the back payment was, it's just, it's just a thought.
Now, who owned, uh, Coggins owned that, right? They owned both.
They were never connected to the sewer, either one of them?
Jed Coggins was years ago.
Yeah, they were gone.
With Marion Jed, yeah.
But they bought the brown building, they owned both.
They, they owned both buildings, because I tried buying them before the fire.
Yes.
Yeah.
Not to my knowledge, it's land, and there's an old burned-down foundation.
Yeah.
Can I, have a, no, okay, if you can bring up the spreadsheet that I had for your packets, the information that I collected. I'm gonna bring a little history that I remember from being here for thirteen years. There used to be two different fees, the minimum fifty-six-ten for connected, and eight dollars and eighty-five cents if you weren't connected. Do you remember, Sonia? You were probably charged a lot less.
Always been charged, I was always charged fifty-six-ten, and I was not connected.
So there was another fee for those that weren't connected, for eight dollars and eighty-five cents. Over the course of time, in Lubec's greater Lubec area diminished by things closing, less flow, less use, more. Seasonal residents not having as much usage, because, I mean, we charged the minimum for up to nine hundred cubic feet. After that, you get a little bit more. If everybody in the district only pays the minimum, it doesn't change what our operating costs. Our operating cost is still the same, actually it's gone off, up quite a bit. So, the Select Board at one time decided to do away with the two different fees and have just everybody pay the minimum. That's where the two fees went away, and became, because there wasn't, there was such a change, you'd be climbing the nursing home clothes, uh, the fish factories closed, there's not as much usage. So, on the sheet that I compared, if you take, get the Lubec line, four hundred thirty-five units for property owners, anybody that gets a bill. If you only calculate the minimum, now, not everybody gets just the minimum, there are a few that pay over the minimum. But if you just calculate just the minimum, that's a hundred and thirty-two thousand, four hundred and fourteen revenue for a year. Our approved budget for the sewer is a hundred and eighty-five thousand. This is deficit, you just make a point there. It's not for upgrades, this is operating cost. That has nothing to do with the five million dollar upgrade.
I can remember, I can remember that, at that time, when they decided to up that price to fifty-six-ten. One of the arguments they gave was, a lot of people was refusing to pay their sewer bill, was in the rear door. That's one of the reasons why they did that.
We have a lean process here.
Nope, no, no, right? And you needed the money to run the place. That's why they made that.
Well, you can have a foreclosure on a property just for a sewer lean, and we have had that.
Now, after the sewer rate, on the, the last line of the spreadsheet, the two thousand nineteen, I went through today and totaled up the four quarters for twenty nineteen. Only one of those quarters were at the old rate of fifty-six-ten, the rest of them had the new rate. Our revenue has increased to a hundred and fifty-three. So my point is, you guys did make a sewer in, rate increase, it's not gonna be the last.
We're still thirty-five thousand in the hole.
Well, we have, but we don't know if we didn't spend one eighty-five yet, that's just budgeted in, we're, we're only at seventy-eight. We have to see at the end of the fiscal year how it works. But, um, I think that your point of taming it is correct, I think we all need to think about it, because, if they're gonna put the decision squarely on the Select Board.
Yeah, history here with it, was when it all started, the users were supposed to support, yeah.
All four of them?
It wasn't supposed to, well, exactly, this is where it's flawed, it wasn't supposed to go into everybody's taxes, and that was a big fighting point, right there, in the debt, they were.
The ordinance is actually, it does talk about that, it says, the town paid the debt.
Agreed to pay the debt.
But the operational costs are from the users and benefits.
But that was one of the things that was a big, big fight.
But if you took the budget, the one, take one eighty-five, you have a calculator, divide by minus eighty, what the bill would be? Take eighty off four thirty-five. Take eighty, eighty off four thirty-five, so, um, three fifty-five. So divide this by three hundred and fifty-five people. I'm just curious as to what it would be.
Three fifty-five.
What's that?
Five twenty-one.
Five hundred. One eighty-five. Divide it by the users, which would be.
Four thirty-five.
Which would be three fifty-five, if you took off the land.
Five hundred twenty-one.
Five hundred and twenty-one dollars.
A quarter?
A quarter, yeah, divide, then divide that by five-four.
Hundred and thirty.
Hundred and thirty, so the seventy, if, the seventy, um, six would go to a hundred and thirty. Maybe some sort of compromise would work, where, where we could have a smaller minimum, but I also feel, you know, smaller minimum for non-connected, but also a, a charge to hook it up. Not just.
That's in the ordinance, so.
Yeah, it always was, it always was.
We're talking about, you know, some kind of, if, if the landowners are getting a benefit for not, like, listen, you sell your properties, Sonia, and you. you sell your property, Sonia, and you've got this great benefit that you're only paying fifteen dollars now instead of seventy-six or a hundred and thirty, that they have to pay some, some fee to be reconnected for the, for the privilege of putting, of being back in the sewer system and then, of course, going to the minimum afterwards.
I guess the reason I wanna pay it was because.
I think that's something we could do, you have to do that for tree grow.
Or if you just wanted to hook up the sewer, say there's hope that, I'm not hooked in power or sewer.
Forget about the cost of hooking it up, we're talking about just.
Who hooks the sewer up if I should decide?
The water company, I think, in the presence of our sewer operator.
Because they're gonna come on back on.
Yeah, we, and the owner pays.
Yeah, the owner pays.
From the house to the, to the lateral, to the lateral. But then also the.
Then you would stop facing my sewer bill on my water usage.
Yes, and also your minimum, all, all of your, your minimum, your min, it would be your minimum. You would be included in the minimum and then however many people were hooked up, it's divided by. It should always have been, whatever your yearly expenses were, should have been divided by the users all along, just what it says in the ordinance.
The reason I wanna.
We're going in the right direction with the seventy-six-ten.
The reason I wanna pay it is because I wanna, I wanna do a little research, because if you take from over here, we're already in the hole, if you take from over here, you're gonna add over there. And I just wanna be able to look at the numbers.
Yeah, on the spreadsheet.
Yeah, I just wanna look at everything because if you take from the right hand, you're gonna put it back in the left hand.
And you wanna know how long it's gonna take that?
I mean, if you're down five thousand dollars in revenue, you're gonna make it up over here.
Yeah, and I think that's all.
Well, the only, it, it's, it's pretty simple. If you take it off, if you give a certain fee to the landowners that are not hooked up, it's going to go only to the users, period. I mean, there's no, there's no question as to where it's going, it's not, it's going to that.
Right.
So the, you know, we can use, we can come up with some numbers like.
That's what I wanna do.
What would be the fee, what would be a reasonable fee that would be fair to the landowner non-hooked up? Possibly my suggestion of considering a fee to, when you re-hook up, which would be yourself or someone you sell it to, but because you were taken off of it, I think there should be some kind of fee to be hooked back up if you don't have the minimum. But all of these are suggestions that we should probably think the next time.
When I, thank you, when I was researching this, the original ordinance, it, it's understandable because there has to be a certain amount of funds in order to run the sewer. Although frankly, I think that should have been an add to the overall tax bill, though I'm led to say that.
And it is.
Not, you know, and not to people who are on the line, sewer line. But I think it makes a lot of sense if you're dormant, and let me put, if you're in exclusion, you've never been hooked up. If you choose to go dormant, then that's a fee to disconnect and it's a fee to reconnect. Frankly, the, the maintenance of clean water and the plant should be on the users that are using. And maybe I'll have to look at a minimum on the water usage. I, I don't think it's fair, however, if that only affects people who are seasonal. And I think that's going to be a big gripe, and I would have the same gripe.
Can you explain that?
Why? Because they use less water, so they'd always have, you know, they'd always have a reduced bill. But you have to find a minimum that is going to support the system. And I don't think you can always do catch-up, I think, you know, you do an analysis, Renee is great at, at doing comparatives. But the system and the maintenance of the system, it's only fair that it's on users. The fact that that original ordinance for that, that bond measure has expired, I think, makes it even more appalling that people who aren't hooked up are paying. And I think that's where there's a risk for litigation in this town, and I really think that you need to confront with counsel on it. I'm not an attorney, but I, I don't think you can charge people for something they never had and they never used and you've already paid your bond measure.
There is a standard fee for seasonal users there, because they usually have their water shut off when they go.
It's water that's separate.
Yeah, you can make a request.
You pay the sewer all the time.
Some people make a request, some people don't. I mean, I never made the request, I figured if you're in the town, you pay the town. That's the way it is.
I know the water company, they get fifty dollars, I think, to turn it on, fifty dollars to shut it off.
Well, maybe that's too.
It's like two hundred and thirty-five dollars for seasonal water.
Exactly, it is.
It's a lot more than that.
Oh, it is?
I mean, it's not an attractive option, I don't know why people don't stay here.
I just am concerned with trying to, I just wanna clarify that you are not confusing the yearly operating costs with this five, four to five million dollar upgrade. Because that's something three hundred and eighty-five people are never gonna be able to afford. And I think it probably, and I'm just speculating, state law, that we have to have it in working operation. Otherwise, we go back to subject systems.
That's right.
I mean, that's something that we have.
Oh, no, that was federal.
Something like the bond measure.
Federal law, we have, I mean, we can't.
We had no choice.
We don't have a choice there and you can't expect.
When this all happens.
I mean, you will have a ghost town if you expect three hundred and fifty-five people to pay for five million dollars and we'll all be gone.
But to tell you the truth, if you expect four hundred and thirty-five people to support a five million dollar. You're gonna have a ghost town.
But that's a bond measure, is what that is.
Before this, the sewer and water came in, the sewer dumped into the back. Everyone's sewer dumped into the back.
Everywhere in the United States.
But I also think, wasn't there a problem that some towns were, and obviously I wasn't here, but they were all told you need to do this, and a lot of towns didn't.
Well, Eastport, then, the other one that then was.
Jonesport.
How's that working out for you?
Eastport, Jonesport, still down.
But you're not, you're well done, that needs to be gone there.
Maybe, maybe they should pay for the.
Maybe they can pay for the upgrade, yeah.
To be real honest, the water company is almost in the same boat. They've drawn up on their rates, and I was just told today their usage is down a lot right now, from what it was even last year. The water company. And they're, they're facing the same things, they gotta upgrade some things and the money's just not coming in.
They get eighty thousand dollars for the, the little hydrants there.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is the money just isn't, isn't there because they don't have the users, just like the sewer doesn't have the users. They're in the same boat.
Let me put a little pot of gold at the end of this wonderful rainbow.
You're gonna take some.
For our band?
I just wanna say that the demographics of Lupeck are changing a little bit. Not fast enough, but they are changing, and we are having more people move in and presumably all those people will be hooking up to the sewer.
But unless they're new, you can't, you can't go up the top.
Unless they're new.
All the time, no.
Are too. We wanna make a motion. Make a motion to table.
I, I.
I'd be all year long.
Good.
And take lots of showers.
Make a motion to table, because I wanna.
We don't even.
Till when, next time?
Next, yes, I wanna see some numbers.
Then maybe we can have a sketch. Brain sketch.
Second it.
All in favor?
Sorry, but, Julie, I'm glad you brought that up.
Yes, definitely. I, I think we'll, we will definitely, I think there's a lot of, there's some fairness in all of it. Figure it out, we will figure it out, a lot of thinking gaps, a lot of thinking gaps on. So Renee, Shoreland ordinance update, you said that we are doing whatever we want.
I was just letting you all know, the Shoreland zoning ordinance needs to be updated. We sent it to our attorney, she conferred, yes, it does, and she said to set aside about fifteen thousand dollars to do that. So that'll be towards the town meeting date, but just letting you know we're coming in.
Is there a reason why we can't just use the state statutes at Shoreland zoning? Why do we have to have our own?
We have to have a map made.
A map, okay, but, but as far as the ordinance goes, the only reason why the town needs one is if they are more restrictive, but there is a state ordinance, correct? I mean, and who called it the fifteen? I think Renee's trying to tell us we have to talk about this in the budget, but I still don't know enough to know why we need that much money.
She talked to a friend of hers that's a planner, and that's the map that's there.
To do the math in there.
To do the math for the ordinance.
Well, the two hundred and fifty feet from the shore hasn't changed anything, then we lost our shoreline.
This is a different map than one that Jim Clark.
It's not, it's not the flood map.
It's not the flood zone.
Shore zoning is two hundred and fifty feet, I mean, what, what do you want me to mark?
Bummer.
And, and the maps are something else, yeah.
Do we just not have a map at all now?
The problem is, they started this, from the history that I was given, they started this a few years ago with another entity, they gave them a map and after it was found out that it was not correct. So everything that they had paid for all went down the tubes, and they reverted back to the old map because it was so badly.
Really?
When was this?
Something a malpractice.
January day was code enforcement officer.
This is before our time.
It was before your time.
Ah, I like that.
Before our times.
Before all our times.
The college was involved with the GIF and set students to come and go.
Well, we, well, we certainly can get estimates on how, yes, we can get it.
An RFP, we'll have to go out and map it out.
An RFP, so we will, we definitely need to do the RFP before the, before we print the August article because we'll have it in there as a, it'll be a separate article. Will the town appropriate this money to fix this map? So that's.
We might be able to take it out of, are designated at that point, I'm hoping, it's supposed to be.
The budget meeting schedule is, I believe, April fifteenth, then Renee and Suzette will be in training, which is.
Election training.
Election training, which is normally our select board meeting, so we were gonna try to meet on the sixteenth. And that would be Thursday, and that's, of course, the school board night, so we would meet, still, this would be the last five o'clock meeting, and then it goes, then the roads aren't, then it goes back to six o'clock. But we also wanna have a budget meeting at four, I know you may or may not be able to get here, but between four and five, budget, five to six, select board on April sixteen. Renee is optimistically thinking it will all be done in three weeks.
I think this is.
I'll say three meetings.
Three meetings, which means the laws, bring your clock.
At a girl.
Three meetings, right.
So that would be the sixteenth, the twenty-ninth, and the thirteenth.
I'm writing it down, three meetings, right?
Would be the last one, and that would be the third party.
What was the last one?
So you're not, it's always before the meeting, right?
Sixteen, twenty-nine, and thirteen, right?
Thirteen.
I think so.
April was sixteen.
Which is really good.
This is the main one.
April the twenty-ninth.
And where, when are we gonna do the town meeting?
August.
We're also gonna vote on the town meeting.
I'm, I'm hoping for August, for the town meeting.
Yeah.
And the election on the fourth.
Did we just get the election and then write go to the meeting?
On the same day, but they stopped that a few years ago. We wish two separate days.
Oh, okay.
So we'll have town elections August fourth and a meeting on August fifth with a select board meeting to follow? That would work, then, how's that work?
The thirteenth of May will be the last budget.
For birthday.
What was?
Twenty-nine again?
The four? Yeah, I'm either gonna get elected in or out, one way or another, I'm gonna celebrate, it's gonna be good. Yep, or I'm already here, it'll work, woo, no. Um, great, uh, we have any?
We'll have the budget meetings at four.
Yes.
And select meetings will begin at six again.
Do you think they will do that in three one-hour meetings?
The sixteenth is on the first.
Four to six.
Oh, four to six, okay, after, after the April one, it's gonna be two hours, okay. Committee updates, we kinda did that?
Yeah, I kinda did mine.
You did yours, you did yours, harbor boards, the fourth Monday.
Well, let me do, the recycle is on the fourteenth, our first meeting in a quarter. Valentine's Day, I'm not making cookies.
February twenty-fourth at five is the safe harbor and, and six is the harbor board on February twenty-fourth. And shellfish is, was it the third, did you have?
Yes, we did have one, we didn't have a quorum. A quorum, we had a handful of people, we talked about a few things, they had questions, and stuff. And next month, we're planning on calling to a big crowd because we have to stop doing conservation.
So you're gonna schedule your conservation hours? It's always very busy in March and April, they wanna get shellfish. Anything else? Public comment?
I'd like everyone to be safe tomorrow and Friday.
Yes, is it, I think, just a heads up, I don't believe that we are gonna have the town office open on Friday. We get the freezing rain, they're predicting. I, I don't see having anyone come in where there's a quarter of an inch of ice on the road. So we do have town business, you might wanna do it tomorrow morning, we don't know how long, you know, how bad the roads will get. We may get freezing rain starting tomorrow afternoon, I just don't believe people should be out in freezing rain if they have.
You know, we do have.
At seven AM. That's snow, snow.
Are you gonna make me work Friday?
Freezing rain we're worried about.
Friday is gonna be snow. Start a fire, read a book.
I just asked her if she was gonna make me work Friday. I think you should just sit home and eat.
Renee has another announcement.
I just would like to announce that absentee ballots are available for the March third presidential primary and special referendum. Also, February fourteenth is the last day that you can change your party before.
So the primaries are, if you're a registered Republican, there's a Republican ticket, I believe only Donald Trump is on that, and there's a Democratic primary with many, many names, many, many names on that. I, I don't know, maybe ten, I was reading it today. But there is a referendum that's separate from the two primaries, and for that, any party, whether you are Republican, Democrat, or Independent, needs to come and vote, and that is on immunization. And you can, there'll be more on the news about it, and there is an explanation as to what yes or no means because sometimes it can be confused, and they do have a disclaimer on that. So please come out and vote whether you are, and I know we have many independents here in the town, but we would love to have you come out and vote on the referendum.
Especially if you have small children.
Yes.
Even if you're a staff person, if you're exposed.
So there are sample, sample ballots, everything posted in the, in the hallway there, as you walk in the door, if you wanna read them beforehand, and I guess we'll still see who has won in Iowa, we don't know yet. I said to Renee, let's hope our primaries go better.
Bernie and Buttigieg, I think.
Almost seventy-two percent say.
Just a question, it doesn't matter. No, not Iowa.
Still with democracy until we're not.
That's being worked on.
Public comment?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you for coming, everyone.
Thank you, I'm going right.
I'm reading a, I just started a book on the tyranny of Rome, how all that, and they said, when? And keep the Senate, Congress, and all of Scott, review, but only working between there two.